I am the producer of the show, Vincinity Unplugged, In Search of Game Changers. My mission is to go out to the community in search of people of various careers in life, different aspects of life, such as people in the medical profession, in sports, as writers, musicians, and today, in this case, as community builders and politicians. Some people don't like to be called politicians because in fact they view themselves more as community builders. Regardless, this gentleman I'm going to introduce you to, he's considered to be one of the top up and coming game changers as far as community building, and I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Tim Lowey, running for...
East Lane.
East Lane County Commissioner?
That's correct.
Okay, well sir, I'd like you to basically, if you would, it's great having you on the show.
Thank you.
I've heard your interviews, I've been following you, and quite frankly, I wish I could vote for you because you're not in my district, or not in yours. But, and of course, you've got to say, your opponents are all very impressive as well, at least the ones that have been going to all...
The forums.
The forums, you know, there's a couple that have been missing, I don't know what the excuse is, I'm sure they have one, I'm sure it's a good excuse, fact is, you four guys are impressive, you've been doing all the forums. Anyways, tell us a little...
There's one girl.
One girl?
Yeah.
Okay.
Three guys, one girl.
Three guys, one girl, but you're all very impressive. I would like to, you know, hear a little bit about your background, about who you are and so forth.
All right, well, my name's Tim Lowey, I grew up in Oregon, I grew up in Salem, and I came to Eugene when I was 17 to go to the University of Oregon. And for those of you that know the geography, that's about 65 miles in one direction. Culturally, at that time, which was 1970, it was about 24,000 miles in another, because Salem and Eugene were worlds apart at that time. A world apart, anyway. I found a home, I've been here ever since. I went to the University of Oregon where I graduated, and then I went to work in the construction industry, excuse me. I started in the construction industry to help pay my way through college, and then I decided that I really liked building things. So I started off as a sweeper, which some would say was my level of incompetence, and then I became a laborer, and then a carpenter, and then a small businessman doing subcontractes, framing and foundations on residential houses. And then we started building residential houses, and then we built custom homes, and then we started doing subcontractes on commercial projects, and then we started building commercial projects. So I spent about 35 years in the trades, and about the last 20 of which I was a business owner. For a firm that's in Eugene, that we've done a lot of work in Eugene, you may have seen the lion holding a pendant, Essex General Construction, that was us. And I retired from there at the end of 2013, and subsequently I've been living upriver and involved in the community up there. As far as public service is concerned, I got involved locally in the early 90s, 1990, I got involved with my neighborhood group, which at that time was the Crest Drive Citizens in south-central Eugene, and I became the leader of that group, and then the neighborhood leader, and then the chair of the Neighborhood Leaders Council, and from there I got involved with a city visioning project, which was called Eugene Decisions at that time. And we organized the neighborhood groups to help the city with that, in terms of trying to define what the budget priorities and the community priorities were in the context of ballot measure five, which had just passed, which changed the funding of education. Then I was appointed to the Budget Committee, and then I became a, ran and became a city councillor in Eugene in the last half of the 1990s. And subsequent to that, I haven't sought elective office very often, mostly what I've done is volunteer work in policy bodies, like the Police Commission and the Civilian Review Board and others. The Public Safety Coordinating Council for Lane County and the Human Services Commission for Lane County. We've worked on a variety of proposals before the community, the first one I think I worked on as a councillor was fire redeployment, which is what we called it, because in the middle 90s we recognized that all the fire stations in Eugene had been built in the 40s and 50s, and so they weren't, didn't meet the current needs of the community. In fact, there were no fire stations over the Ferry Street Bridge, so a big part of the community, if the bridge went down for some reason, wouldn't have access to fire and most emergency medical services. So we built, we put together a plan that we spent a couple of years analyzing, and then went before the public for a proposal for a bond measure to build training facilities for fire and police and new fire stations all over the city. Second and Chambers is probably the biggest one. Subsequently, we built Station One at 13th and Mulamet and others throughout. From there, we opened some streets downtown, Mulamet Street and Olive Street, because the pedestrian mall wasn't working as the way it was intended. Then we built the library, we found funding from the Urban Renewal District to help pay off the debt on that, and then some, the Library Foundation raised some funds, and then we went to the community for the remainder of it. And it's currently a three-story library, but when we built it, we built it with the idea that there's a fourth story that they could expand into over time if they needed. So that's currently housing some city offices, but it is available for library services.
That's really looking ahead.
Yeah, in the future.
It's good. Save a lot of money by looking ahead, ahead and doing preemptive, yeah.
Well, that was, that was the idea. So, that's kind of my involvement in the city of Eugene. With Lane County, I was involved with the Coordinating Council, which was a body that had a variety of services, including prosecution services, the district attorney sat at the table, the sheriff sat at the table, the police chief of Eugene, or Springfield, depending on which one wanted to do it at that time, and then a small chief, a small city representative, human services, mental health services, social services, youth services. The idea was that it's not just public safety, the fact is, it's public health and safety. One way that that can be described pretty easily is, a lot of the property crime, some would say the majority of property crime we have is prompted by people trying to support substance habits, whether that may be hard drugs, or other things, needles, or powder, whatever it may be. That is a public safety issue, but it's also a public health issue, because as we know, addiction is many ways a health issue. And so the idea is that you try and coordinate the services across the spectrum, and find people, find ways for people to work together to prevent behaviors, crimes, and also address crimes, and reduce what's known as recidivism. For people that end up in the criminal justice system and maybe go to prison, when they come out, they don't reoffend. You find a way for them to come back into society and get incorporated into society. So I happened to be the chair of that body, that's about 18 people on that body, in the 19, in the 2010s, 2010 through about 2013. And that also happened to be the point in time when the county was going through serious budget cuts, because it has long-term funding from secure rural schools, or payment in lieu of taxes was going away, and continually went down year by year. And it was bad enough that the sheriff was in the unenviable position, because the sheriff is responsible for the correction system, the Lane County Jail, of either disobeying federal law or disobeying state law.
One or the other?
One or the other.
Not both? So if he did one, he'd be disobeying that, and if he did the other, he'd be disobeying...
Right.
Okay.
And the reason was that state law requires that anyone who is arrested for what's known as a measure 11 crime, a crime that has a mandatory minimum sentence, state law requires that people be kept in jail pre-trial. But federal law, in the terms of the Justice Department, had come down with an overcrowding ruling that said you can only have so many people in the correctional institution at any time with this level of staffing, and if you exceed that, people have to be released. Well, the staffing level was so low, and the capacity was so low at the time, that people were being released who, under state law, should have been retained. That has largely been corrected with the Public Safety Levy that was just renewed this last spring.
Now, what do you mean by Public Safety Levy? I don't even know what that means, quite frankly.
Well, okay, so the county, for the period of the 90s and early, into the 2000s, had gone to the community about 10 times, asking for money to fund the jail and other services. And the community said no. Finally, in 2012, I think, they, the Board of Commissioners and the sheriff decided, and the district attorney decided they were going to go again, but they were only going to ask for one thing, and that was the capacity to operate additional beds in the Lane County Jail, and some small number of beds in youth services in the Serbue Center. And that was all they asked for. And they asked for it for five years, and it would sunset after five years, and the funds would be dedicated just to that purpose. That finally passed. That's what I mean by a levy.
Okay.
It is where people agree to pay more property taxes each year to fund those operations.
Now, how do the people agree? I don't know too many people who would say, "I want to, yeah, increase my property tax for this, this, or this." How does that go through to make sure that the people are being represented, and they actually do say, you know, "I'm ignorant in that..."
Well, it's a vote, okay? It goes to the ballot.
Is that one of the measures?
It's a measure, yes.
Okay, right, right, okay.
And from my perspective, if we've had some, I've had some success, we've had some success, again, the fire redeployment, the libraries, some parks and open spaces in Eugene, and the safety levies. It needs to, it needs to address a real need, something that the community understands needs to be addressed. It needs to be a good deal, and it needs to be very clear.
Okay.
They don't want to be confused, they want to make, understand that they're getting the value for what they're spending, and they want to address a real need. So if you can put those things, three things together, I think you've got a better chance for success. And that's what happened with the jail levy. It passed in 2012, and then recently it was renewed in 2017.
Okay.
Because people understood that it did what it said it would do. And also, it turned out that the sheriff didn't need all the funds that was in the original levy, so he, for all intents and purposes, the county rebated some of those back.
Oh, they rebated?
Yeah. And that makes people feel good.
Sure.
They feel like they're getting value.
Sure.
So that's what I mean by a levy. It's a, it's an ability where people have the ability to tax themselves to provide a service that they think they need, that usually comes from local government.
Okay.
Schools used to be that way.
So you've got a lot of experience being on boards and commissions and neighborhood groups and so forth, the Police Commission, and I understand that one of the candidates that I spoke to for state, Marty Willey, he was on the Police Commission?
He was, after I was there, but yes.
And then Joe, Joe was in the Police Commission?
Joe Bernie was on the, yes.
No, I meant Joe, the guy who interviewed before, Tyndall.
Okay.
Okay, so, and there's been other people, so I, I was like, you know, all these commissions, all these boards you're on, you have to put an application in for each one? I mean, not just a regular, "I work for 7-Eleven, I'm a high school dropout, I kind of party most of the time." Would it be feasible, would I be likely to get accepted if I was to apply for one of those boards, or the city budget group, or...
Well, I, I think they always need volunteers, and knowing you, the little I do, sure, absolutely.
So I just wondered, what, you know...
The process is that you will do an application for many of the committees that I've served on, they are either council-appointed committees, that is, committed, the membership is appointed by the city councillor, or they're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners.
And they're unpaid, right?
Yes, they're volunteer.
Okay, so it's not like anybody looking for employment is not going to, they're not, yeah, it's basically to serve the community and to get some experience?
That's right. That's right. It's not just to get experience, but it is actually to give back to the community, to serve the community. Politics gets a bad rap.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And some of it's deserved, particularly when we're talking about the bloodsport of politics, where people are basically beating up on each other all the time and calling each other names. But there's two perspectives on politics. The root of the word is policy. It comes on how we set the policies that order our endeavors, our society. There's two ways to look at policy. The way that it's most commonly looked at in a political body, in an elected body, is you want to get enough votes on the body to be able to set the policy. I look at it a little differently, and I look at it that what you're trying to do is find the best policy that most serves, best serves the needs of the public. And so you deliberate around what those policies are in the terms of addressing real needs in the community. In that framework, it doesn't matter if you're conservative, or if you're liberal, or if you're one perspective, one party, or another party, because the problems are the same.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that.
We have a lot more in common, and a lot more to deal with in common than we have that divides us, but we focus a lot on what divides us.
Yeah, I, you know, when I thought of it, you know, you're always taught to believe as you grow up, that, you know, the Republican Party is this one football team, Democrats are the other football team, they're vastly different, and so you're either for the good guy, and that depending on your perspective, this is the good guy, this is the good guy, and the other people are mostly wrong. And when you, when you talk to Democrats, Republicans, everybody, it seems like 90% of the issues that face us are worries and concerns we have in common.
Exactly.
And so I hear a lot of the people being accused of being watered-down Republican, watered-down Democrat, and they're just saying, "We're just trying to deal with the 90% of the problems that we're facing now, that we have to take care of, that concerns Republicans, Democrats, everyone alike." But, you know, you guys get beat up a lot for things that I don't think should.
We have a tendency, but we do get beat up.
Comes with the job, right?
It does come with the job, it comes with the territory. If you want to serve like that, particularly in elective office, which some perceive of as a position of leadership, you have to be willing to stand up, and to some extent you have to be willing to take the hits.
Yeah.
Lights not aside, it was Harry Truman that said, "If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen."
Get out of the kitchen, right, right.
But regardless, the truth is, that most people are well-intended, they're trying to serve the needs of their community, whether it's housing, whether it's mental health, whether it's public health, or healthcare. It's trying to find a way to navigate that, those issues in a way that helps people. My perspective is, and I've worked with Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, a Communist, all on elective bodies at different times, and my perspective is, I don't care what perspective you bring, as long as your decision-making is based on what you perceive to be the best interest of the public we serve.
Not the parties.
Not the parties, not, not maybe a special group of interests that helped get you elected.
Right.
Not some vision of a political career you have, may have for yourself. The public needs to be remembered. Too often, I think we forget, in government, and in representative bodies, in professional service in government, whether as a professional planner, or a police officer, or whatever it may be, we understand that there needs to be a relationship between the professional staff and the elected officials, because the elected officials is the body maker, the policymakers, and the representative body. So there's a good relationship often between those groups, but the public often gets forgotten, they get left behind, they get, they don't, they're not in the forefront of people's minds, and that's where the service is supposed to be, is for the public. I do this because, one, I feel it's important to serve publicly, but I also do it because I enjoy it. I mean, I'm not a martyr, I'm not out here, you know, doing this because I feel some great obligation, I do enjoy it. And when I enjoy it most is when there's an intersection between the public's interest, the professional interest, and the representative interest. When people have a shared vision along those lines, I have seen amazing things happen. If elected officials, whether they're state representatives, or state senators, or local councillors, or commissioners, if they come in a room with their minds made up, and are posturing on their positions, there's no deliberation, there's no honest conversation truly going on. And that doesn't happen all the time, but it does happen. But if they come in the room willing to listen to one another, and actually work the problem, not the personalities, work the problem and try and find ways to go, they may come out of that with something entirely different than anybody anticipated coming in, and it may be the better, a better solution than anybody had in mind before. I've seen that happen.
Okay.
That's cool. I like that.
The question you bring up, or you mentioned, the situation where people posture and there's been no deliberation. And there's always accusations from, whether it's from people seeking office who have an axe to grind, or maybe they actually, their agenda is to seek the office and pick out, you know, just insult the people that are in, that maybe they think they'll get them in office. Of course, a lot of the public are saying, "There's a lot of posturing, a lot of people aren't disingenuous to go in politics." And there's a lot of distrust of people who are either in control, or have some control, or in the game, even though they're looking, they want somebody to be in the game, but once you're in the game, they distrust the very people, you know, because they don't want to do it. And then they distrust people who are in it for money, and, you know, were not in it for money, but who have made their fortune. You know, I would argue, this person just wants to serve, he doesn't need the money, she or he or she doesn't need the money, they want to serve, they made their money. And so people want to think, well, there's some darker ulterior motive for a lot of people going into public office. I don't think that's true. But, I mean, the first question was, is, just deliberate, these people coming up and posturing without deliberation, why do you think that happens? Do you think it's always for, I mean, why?
Well, sometimes I think it's cameras.
Okay.
Sometimes I think it's cameras, because, you know, most of the local government is on a camera, it's on government-access television, not public-access television. So sometimes I think the fact that it's being recorded on camera gets in the way.
All right.
I also think that sometimes, for a variety of reasons, it's easier to watch the tape or watch them on TV than it is to be present in the room, for whether it's reporters from the fourth estate, whether it may be print reporters or television reporters, or whether it's the public themselves. But we know from decades of research on productivity in the private sector and in the public sector, that people are most productive when they are face-to-face in the same room.
Right, right.
And so, I, I, I think people posture sometimes because they put themselves in those boxes.
Okay.
But I don't mean that all the time.
Right.
You talked a little bit about a perception that the public has, that anybody in public office, or a lot of the people in public office, are disingenuous, are dissembling.
That's not my view, but yeah, a lot of people think, yeah.
But a lot of people have that view, and, not without merit, in some circumstances. I have a little perspective on this, that I kind of have adopted for this particular run, and I have actually adopted it in, in business for many years, it's a little bit different than that, but in business, really, it came down to three essential parts. If you're going to be spending more of your life working than you spend with your family or sleeping, it should be fun.
Yeah.
You should enjoy it. It doesn't mean you enjoy it all the time, but you should enjoy it, because then you'll do better at it, you'll like what you're doing, you won't mind getting up and going to work.
Yeah.
In fact, you might like going to work because you like what you see at the end of the day. Part of the reason I became a builder was because, at the end of the day, it was there.
Complete it, yeah.
My kids got a little tired of what I called the building tours, you know, "See that one? See that one?"
Yeah, I did building for a while, too, yeah.
Right. The other one is, communication is the key, particularly in commercial construction, or industrial, or, you know, institutional construction. When you've got a lot of projects going on, with a lot of materials and labor and equipment going into the ground in different locations, you have to be constantly communicating well, not just financially, but also in the terms of coordinating the scope and sequence of events, et cetera. So communication is very key.
Working with different personalities and all that, yeah.
Right, right, and different subcontractors, different vendors, different carpenters, different, you know, all the way through. That's absolutely essential, communication, and then people enjoying what they do. But the most important one is honesty is truly the only policy. And as I tell people, I used to tell them a story about a very famous general contractor, building contractor, who ended up being part of the Hoover Dam and the Golden Gate Bridge and others, named Kaiser. And there was a period of time, Kaiser Aluminum, Kaiser Permanente, started with a wheelbarrow, building roads in the 20s and the 10s, or something like that. There's a, there's a story, it's an anecdote, I don't know how true it is, but there's an anecdote about, he was working on the west slope of the Cascades on a dual dam system. You know, sometimes you drive up the Cascades, like you've got Dexter Dam, and then you have Lookout Point, you'll have two dams, one above the other, it's that way on the Sandy Am. There's a couple of larger dams on the Sandy Am, one is about five miles above the lower one.
Right.
He was working on those in the November, and he was the superintendent or project manager on the lower dam, and he had another superintendent or project manager working on the upper dam. And it was one of those November rainstorms, like we get sometimes on the west slope of the Cascades. And he called up above and said, "Is everything okay up there?" And his superintendent said, "Yeah, everything's good," as he was watching some construction forms floating down the river. Now, we all know what happens when things go down the river.
Yeah.
They go down the river, so, you know, ten minutes later, they go by Mr. Kaiser.
He was afraid that they would kill the messenger, yeah.
Right, he was going to get in trouble, right, et cetera. And Kaiser went up to him and said, "That is your only chance in this. I need to know the truth." The truth is, people's lives depend on knowing the truth. So whatever you do, if you screw up, you screw up. If something's happening, it's happening, but don't hide it. Tell me, I need to know. If I have to find out another way, the damage is going to be a lot worse, and I'm not going to trust you, and I can't work with you if I don't trust you. So in this run for office, I ran into a quote some 30 years ago in reading something in the wisdom traditions that said, "We can't speak the truth," and by, they were talking about truth with a capital T, "but we can speak from the truth." And I was thinking about that, and I'm going, "Well, yeah, sometimes we know when we've got it just right, when we feel the muse working through us, or feel connected, and we know that what we're saying has more meaning than what we normally say."
Right.
But most times we don't, even when it does have more meaning. But we always know when we're dissembling. We always know when we're spinning, or trying to be a little bit devious in what we're expressing, because you have to, there must be intent to do that. And what I tell people is, if I find myself sliding down that slope, which is a slope that's easy to go down sometimes, you'd be surprised, I've been paying attention to this for a couple of years now, and, you know, you embellish a little bit here, you do something there, and, "Well, maybe that's not exactly what it is." But more importantly, if other people have the perception that I'm spinning, or we're talking around an issue, they can always call me on it.
And you invite them to do that.
I invite them to do that.
Yeah, not many people would.
Well...
A lot of people, in fact, even people who say, "I invite you to do it, please, if you love me," and then when you do, it sometimes ruins relationships and marriage, but then there was really nothing there to begin with.
Well, I don't know about that, but I do know that if you're serving something larger than yourself, which is what the public is in this society, we'd be a lot better off if people in public trust would be willing to work from that basis.
It'd be nice if you had the people around you do that, instead of being afraid to get in their head, hand it back to them. I know the public is, but if they're willing to go out and...
I think most people have a positive intention.
Yeah.
I think it's just easy sometimes, when you talk a lot, to, to not pay close attention to what it is you're saying, if it's really addressing the questions in front of you.
That's me a lot of times, I do that.
Well, it's, it's, it's easy to do. But we'd be so much better off if people recognized, "Okay, I'm going down that road, let's back up a little bit, let's reset, let's reframe a little bit." Anybody in public trust, whether they're an elected official, it's required for police officers, but whether you're an elected official, or operate a backhoe, you know, or whatever it may be.
Right.
And we have bad days, and people make mistakes, we are not a perfect folk, we are not a perfect people, and to expect such is not reasonable, but we can try.
Yeah.
We have an aspirational democracy, we have ideas in our democracy, like life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and humans being created equal.
I like that, aspirational democracy.
We're not there, we haven't achieved it, we have some things we have to face, that we have done in the past, but we can still aspire to those ideals. We can still aspire to take care of the less vulnerable in our society, to take care of our children, to take care of the elders in our society, or our seniors. What got me in this race was the division that I saw on the screens, whether it was my computer screen, or watching television, the news, or reading the newspaper, or listening to the radio. It seemed like public discourse had become a bloodsport. People were talking about fake news, people were calling each other names, people were saying, "These people are no good, dirty rotten scoundrels," and then those people would say, "These people are no good, dirty rotten scoundrels," and the center falls away. There's no middle ground, there's no common ground. That's not new to the United States, that's not new to humankind, that's happened many times in history, but when it happens, it's a dangerous place to be.
Do you think that social media has made that tendencies for that better or worse, or what do you think?
Well, I think it's a... Well, I think it's a lot easier to insult somebody when you're not looking at them.
Yeah.
I think, I will say that. I don't use social media very much.
And the computer technology is easier to fake news and pictures and so forth.
And it's usually, it's much easier to get a sense of reality when you see it as electrons on a phosphor screen or on an LED screen. But that's not reality. I mean, reality is face to face, human to human. And that is the most encouraging thing I have found in this race. Because I got in it because of that divide. I felt compelled that I had to do something because of the division I saw going on and around, when I truly believe we have more in common than we have than divides us. And the middle ground is falling away. And that's a power over game.
Right.
It's my way or the highway. Well, that doesn't work. At least, I've never seen it work well.
A lot of resentment that way.
It works, yeah, it makes enemies. And unnecessarily at times. Because even if it is your way for a short period of time, it's not going to work out in the end because the world doesn't...
You'll be sabotaged from within line, yeah.
But what I have found, particularly in rural Lane County, East Lane County, because East Lane County is huge. I mean, it goes from the Douglas County boundary to the south, to the Lynn County boundary in the north, essentially from I-5 to the crest of the Cascades. Geographically, it's twice the size in land area of Rhode Island.
Does it go to all the way to the coast?
No. Lane County goes all the way to the coast.
That's right, okay, yeah.
There are five districts. East Lane County goes to the Cascades. West Lane County goes to the coast. Then the metro area, East Lane County is the biggest. It's about two thirds.
So East Lane County is the size of Rhode Island?
Twice.
Twice the size of Rhode Island?
Geographically.
That's pretty darn big.
It's huge. And I have known commissioners from that area before and I know how hard that is. There's three major watersheds in that area. There's the Coast Fork of the Willamette coming down from London, up by Dorina. There's the Middle Fort coming from Westford and Oak Ridge. And there's the McKenzie. And then there's the Mohawk that comes into the McKenzie near the Springfield area. Those are major geographic features, major geographic areas, ecosystems in their own form and fashion. No one person, because for anybody that doesn't live with a city council or a mayor, their local government official is their county commissioner. One person can't do that job. And I knew that that wasn't going to be, and I also knew I was 64 years old and didn't have the energy I had when I was 34.
Amen to that.
So it became apparent to me that what's important is to actualize the potential in the communities. Whether it's a small neighborhood, whether it's a small city, there are always people working together to try and address the problems they have. They may be different in different communities and often they are. But helping those people so their voices are heard and helping them facilitate what they need, at least from the county, to try and be more productive, get more done. And it's not always money and there's not a lot of money there.
Right.
But there is a lot of energy. One thing, we have a serious problem, when I graduated from high school, Oregon had one of the best public education systems in the country. It was top five. Some thought it was top two. Now we have one of the worst public education systems in the country.
And when was it, what year was it, top two or five, whatever?
When I graduated, it was 1970, '71. It was, it was right up there.
Yeah, I came out in '82 and I heard the schools are still pretty good, but...
They were good.
But then just past couple of years at Lane College, I've heard the stats that...
They're not so good.
They're like, you know, a lot of the people coming out of high school aren't prepared.
That's right. Well, you remember that discussion we were have earlier about how do you convince people to tax themselves to pay more for something?
Right.
Well, when you and I, when I was growing up, and you were growing up, because it was '82, people could tax themselves to pay for their schools. They'd have serial levies for the schools. And they did. Sometimes it took two or three tries because they had to come back and make it a little less, prove it was a good deal, prove it was a real need, but they did. That all changed in 1990 because we passed what's known as Ballot Measure Five, which took all of the funding for public education and gave it to the state. And told the local districts, the local communities, you can't tax yourself for schools anymore.
Why'd they do that?
Well, the argument was that property taxes were rising too fast and people were going to be priced out of their homes. And there was truth to that argument.
I, yeah.
And the other point to make was that this was the fourth or fifth or sixth time that a property tax limitation measure had come before the public. And the previous times, the public had always voted it down. But in that intervening 10, 12 years, the legislature didn't address the issue. So when it finally came up in 1990, they said, okay, you won't do it as our elected leaders, we'll do it as our voting public. Now, I believe there's a little bit of a ruse to that. Because it is true that individual homeowners did get some tax benefit. Their taxes went down. But who really got the tax benefits were industrial properties, commercial properties and resource lands. They were, for a period of time, getting incredible tax breaks. And when that measure gave the state the responsibility to fund schools statewide, it didn't give them the resources to do that. So they had to cut other services. The schools have suffered because of that.
What's your solution for that?
Well, I think, ultimately, I think we need to look at taxation in Oregon.
What kind of taxation?
I think we need to look at how resource lands are taxed, timberlands, gravel mines, extractive industries. I think we need to look at how, now, my facts may not be currently up to date, and if they're not, I'm sure I will not, I will hear about it. But as of some years ago, when your property is appraised, when you want to buy a house or get a loan for a house...
Sure.
It's appraised, it's generally appraised in two ways. On the basis of cost of replacement cost, what it would take to build it, market value in the terms of what comparable sales are, and previous sales history. And those three are combined. For commercial properties and industrial properties, it's based on, has been primarily based on prior sales history. Well, those properties don't turn off over that much. So a prior sales may be five or 10 years before. So you're basing the value for taxation on something that is at least some years old.
Which means it's under, under valued?
One could certainly make the argument. Take on top of that, the move in the later 90s for Ballot Measure 47 and 50, that said that government can only grow at a rate of 3% per year, when we know, at least I know as a, as a small business owner, that we were looking at 10, 15, 20, 25% premium increases each year in the healthcare we were providing for our employees.
Right, yeah.
That makes it really hard to provide services. And then add to that, a measure, because Oregon's tax system is based on income taxes primarily. And income taxes are subject to the business cycle. In other words, we have growth and then we have a recession. We have growth and we, that's historically always been the case.
Things go in cycles.
Right, they go in that cycle. Well, it used to, if you were in business, you understood that, so you'd save for a rainy day. You'd have a cash reserve in case, so when things went down, you didn't have to lay everybody off. You may be cut back to three quarter time, but everybody kept their wages and benefits, or at least most did. Oregon, in its wisdom, decided that it wanted a kicker. So that anything more than X amount of money that came in in the good years had to be refunded to the communities, had to be refunded to individual taxpayers, corporations and businesses. That makes it very hard to build a reserve. So that when the next downturn comes, like happened in 2008 or in 1982, the year you were born was an incredible, was a much worse recession in the Northwest.
What year was I born?
'82.
No, I was born in '55.
Oh, you graduated from high school in '82. I'm sorry.
No, I moved out here in '82.
Yeah, okay.
I'm a few years younger than you, yeah.
All right. Well, you just look young.
Yeah, I have bleached my hair and dyed my hair, that's why.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to try that. So those are the, those are the sort of things that we need to face. Because our children are not doing well in schools. About a third of the kids that enter school don't graduate from high school. That's a low graduation rate. It's one of the lowest in the country. The elderly, the elders in our community, the seniors, many of them are on fixed incomes. And while some of them may own their houses, particularly in rural Lane County, the equity they have in their houses is not sufficient to where they can sell it and move into the urban areas because the prices are so much higher. So they're making choices, many of them, each month about whether they pay, whether they fill their prescriptions or buy more food or turn up the heat a little bit. Those aren't, that's not a society that makes sense to me.
No.
We need to take care of those who've taken care of us. We need to take care of those who depend on us. And we need to find ways to do that that are reasonable.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
And that doesn't mean that, you know, you open up the coffers and everybody spends everything to do everything for everybody. That works best locally where people understand what needs to happen in their communities. We need resilient communities. We need, all our communities need to be resilient. Last year in East Lane County, the fires, last year in the whole Northwest, in August, if you were to look on a map with fires in Oregon, Washington, Montana and Idaho, it was a flame. It was all, seemed like it was burning and big portions of it were. We need the resiliency to take care so that we can respond in crisis, so that we have systems in place to help each other. We had people up in the McKenzie Valley who would not leave their homes because they were afraid as soon as they left, somebody'd break into their home.
Right.
But they were in circumstances of incredible smoke, these sort of older folks. We can address these issues. We are a very innovative, creative, adaptive species. That's why we've thrived to where we are.
Yeah.
We are a cooperative, communicative species. I mean, there are those that argue that it's our ability to walk upright that created our ability to make sounds, which created symbols and language, which allowed us to, we have all these capacities.
Yeah, we have the ability to collaborate if we, if we...
We do.
We just have to...
We do it all the time. These stoppage stop signs.
Yeah, and maybe just, the only thing is with people like you who are good communication skills, who have the, the history of keeping people together, to act as a, okay, we're all moving in unison to this one goal, that's a skill that you need in government, I would think, especially in government, right? I mean...
Maybe. I don't think it's so much about the leadership as it is about the people.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, basically, you're just, it was, okay, I was talking to someone earlier today and I said, some of the most, the leaders, and you could argue that they were, some of them were sociopaths or evil people out to conquer the world, but some of the most famous historic leaders, like Alexander the Great, Attila the Hun, Genghis Khan, Hannibal, all these guys, they, they commanded a lot of respect, not commanded, but they, they engendered a lot of respect and loyalty because they were on the front lines with their people, serving their people, putting their own life on the line, getting their skin in the game and saying, hey, I'm going to bleed with you. And sometimes we'd like, basically like, Attila the Hun, I'll just keep wooden spoon, wooden plate, you have all this gold, basically serving and giving more to the people that helped him to conquer. And I would imagine that other leaders like yourself would say, hey, I'm putting you here right with me, before me.
It's about service.
Yeah.
I mean, there are other names that come to mind like Mahatma Gandhi and Martin Luther King.
Putting their skin, they're putting their stuff on the line.
Malcolm X and others, right. You're willing to stand up. And all you ask is, if I stand up, I'm going to take some hits, just stand with me, or at least stand behind me.
Hold me up when I take you up.
Yeah, that's right. And we can do that. And we do that for each other. Because, and, you know, if, we have a tendency, I think, let me know if I go on too long, but...
No, no, we got 16 more minutes.
All right. We have a tendency in this society to kind of think that once people are past a certain age, they have less to offer. They should, they should move on and make room for those that are younger. And there's, I can tell, there are only two things that come with age. And they don't always come together.
Or bathroom breaks at night.
Well, that's... Experience and wisdom.
Yeah.
You cannot get wisdom any other way than by having the experiences that you learn from.
Right.
That wisdom is an invaluable asset for our, our adults, our children and each other. There is a lot, and there are a lot of people that are older, that are comfortable, that are willing to offer. I have a friend who lives upriver. He's a great guy. Pete. Pete is constantly going. He's constantly doing things for the community upriver. I constantly see him on the side of the road, picking up trash. It's not because he's obsessed, it's just because he likes to serve. He was in the military for many years. And he's got an incredible amount of energy. And he's, I often see him with a friend of his, too. And they're just out there doing this without expecting a lot of accolades, without expecting to get, just because it contributes.
Needs to get done, they've got to do it.
Those people are everywhere. We just need to, we just need to give them a pat on the back, give them a reason to do it and give them some hope. We deserve a reason to be hopeful for tomorrow.
Yeah.
All of us. And if you watch the news, if you listen to the radio, if you pay attention to the TV a lot, it doesn't seem like a very hopeful message out there. So I started this some time ago with the whole, the biggest pleasant surprise that I found in this run. Because I got involved because I felt the division was getting, the polarization, the tribalism, the us versus them was getting too strong, too powerful, and it was pulling us further and further apart.
And we're doing it to each other in communities.
We're doing it to each other. And we're doing it to each other in front of each other. It's easier to do anonymously online, but we still do it. And some people feel they have the right to do it. And that's not common courtesy. I mean, there are four concepts, there's common decency, common sense, common ground and common good.
Yeah, I read that in your flyer, I loved it. That's, that's perfect.
That's really, really where this goes forward. And it was a quote from Martin Luther King that really prompted me, the concept behind it, which was that our lives begin to end the day we remain silent about things that matter.
Yeah.
You can agree with bad things going on just by not speaking up against them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it came down to a question of, for me, do I endure the discomfort of running for election and campaigns, which can be pretty intense and can get personal at times, and possibly getting elected, which I'm hoping to do because I'm serious about, because I'm serious about the serving and then serving for four years in a job that covers an area that's twice the size of Rhode Island? Or do I wake up, look in the mirror and go, you had an opportunity to try and help with the things that you're complaining about and you didn't do it? Which will be worse for you? And I decided the latter, the second one of those would be worse for me than the first.
Yeah.
Which is probably not the best. But that's, that's, and the most hopeful thing I have found is how people in all, up and down the watersheds and small communities throughout, work together every day to try and take care of each other and address the needs they have. Pete, not only does he pick up on the side of the road, he reads to first and second graders every week. He mentors kids. They all do. People, not all of us, but a lot of people do. And a lot of people would if they felt valued.
Yeah.
But we don't sometimes give people, we have this, this leadership complex where it's somebody else's job to take care of it. And we don't give the accolade to the people that have been doing this sort of thing all their lives.
Yeah.
They raised a family. They raised a family. Or they've, you know, been in the community, doing, doing their work. They're not to be discarded, they're to be honored.
Well, you know, what I like, what I hear from you, and I wish more people realize about the people who are running for office, I was speaking to a gentleman this, earlier this morning, and this is something that I know you do for yourself, Tony Robbins does it, I do it, you know, and it just like, you have a goal, whether we're chasing fame, I mean, some people are chasing fame, some people are chasing wealth. I know that all my life, I want to be wealthy, but not, as you say, to have power over others, but to have more power with others.
Right, exactly.
And so, that really resonates with me. And so, you know, the, the thing is, is the why. And then you say, I do this because, and you get a lot of people who are famous, they chase the fame, they chase the wealth, all during the time that they're chasing it, they're stressed, they're not happy, then they get there, and they're still not happy, because, okay, so you're wealthy, you're famous, then what? And the thing is, to me, wealth is like an instrument. It's just like, it's like one of your tools in a toolbox. What do you use it for? Do you use it to polish? Do you use it to build? Do you use it to help? And unless you're using it to help people to learn how to help themselves, and get people to collaborate, so they can all have power with each other, as you said...
Exactly.
What's the point?
Exactly. Well, it's true.
And that's what you're trying to do, and I, you know, and I believe a lot of the other people running for office are trying to do that, too. It seems like that you guys agree on a lot of the issues that are currently facing us, like affordable housing, dealing with the homeless situation, a better education, affordable healthcare, all these things. Now, a couple of people contacted me, said, well, we agree on most things about what needs to be done, we just have different approaches. What sort of approach would you say that you, do you have, what are you going to do? How are you going to approach them?
Work the problem, not the personality. Work the issue, not the position. Find out, find small ways to move things forward.
Okay.
Realize that anybody, everybody that comes to a table to address an issue is motivated by a positive intention. They may not agree with you, you may not agree with them, but they believe they're doing something to help. So, take that, work with that in a group. That's how I approach these things. Compromise is not a bad word in my, in my toolbox.
Right.
I know enough mistakes that I've made over my life to know that I don't have all the answers. And I know the best things that happen are when other people start working together with each other and with me to solve a problem. That's when the creativity happens. That's my approach. My approach is power with others, for others. For the other people that are in this race, more power to them. I mean, it takes courage to step up and go out there and run for office.
It takes a lot of their resources, their time.
Yes, yes.
You know, they could be doing other things that they love doing, but they decided to like, put aside these things that they love for something, for a greater good.
So, what I say is, I'm not running against any of the other opponents. I'm running for the people of Eastland County. I'm running because I see people that feel forgotten and left behind.
Yeah.
And I feel, there's a lot of distress. We are aware of the distress in housing in the local communities, in the metro area. We see it, we're confronted with it. We're aware of the, the mental illness that seems to be out there, or the drug problems. It's more hidden, but it's right there in the rural communities. Someone who works in Cottage Grove told me a couple of months ago that there are 10 homeless camps in Cottage Grove. Cottage Grove is a community of about 10,000 people. That would mean comparatively in Eugene...
One camp per 1,000?
Yeah, that would mean there'd be 165 homeless camps in Eugene, because we're about 165,000 people in this area. So, these problems are all over.
Yeah.
And that doesn't even begin to look at the issue of climate change.
Yeah.
Whatever, however you may feel about it, it's changing.
Yeah.
I mean, it's...
It doesn't matter who's the cause or what's the cause, we got like, more people in coastal areas than ever before in the course of any climate change. Yeah, it's going to be bad.
And we can do better, and we will do better, we have to do better.
Have to.
And I had a friend, who I have a lot of respect for, who once told me that his mother told him, the American people will always do the right thing. It may be the last thing they do, but they will do the right thing.
Yeah.
And I believe that.
I hope you're right.
I believe we are an aspirational society.
Yeah.
And I believe, we do need to face, not only our past, what we've done, and what we do, but we have the strength to do that and the courage to do that.
I, I believe we do. You know, one of the reasons, you asked me how long I've been doing TV, some people say, why are you doing this? Some people want to know why I have a renewed interest, or even a newfound interest, in meeting people like you who are going for the greater good. And so, what I am doing is that, I see that people have a, have the strength or capacity to do what you say. I've seen there's been kind of a little bit of a slump of apathy, or errors in judgment, because they don't know who to turn to, or how to turn to them. Prior to meeting you and other people, I had no idea that you had these different boards and commissions and groups and so forth. I, I remember many years ago, I had a situation where I was representing a handful of people who, of people who were in desperate straits. So, I went to a, a very powerful politician, I won't mention his name, good guy, but he didn't tell me when I went to hear. You know, I'm the lone guy coming to the office, so when you're one lone guy coming to the office, you're often looked at sometimes as either, well, it's just you, or a crank, or who knows? But one thing he said that really struck me as being like, wow, very powerful, very, very right on, where's your friends, your family, your union, your community behind you?
Absolutely.
Where are they? And I'm like, what, I'm, I'm not valuable enough to listen to? He goes, no, you don't understand. We, as public officials, servants, we have hundreds of fires we have to put out, we have issues like you just can't imagine.
Right.
And he said, it's just you right now. Over here, I got coalitions, people with groups and groups and groups and groups. And it's not, it's not like I need to listen to them because I want to stay in office. I need to listen to them, because there's more people here. So, if you're going to save somebody, are you going to save like thousands of people or one person? I only have so much time. So, bring in the people, give me the reason. I mean, I already have a reason, it's a good reason, but you got to have the people behind you. And, you know, and he just said...
That's absolutely true.
That is absolutely true, that's really right on. So, we have to start doing that, we have to come and communicate with you.
If I'm, well, I hope so.
Yeah.
Because I've said many times, I've been in a lot of boards and commissions and other things, where I've been chair or sitting as a member, and I can talk until I'm blue in the face. And if people want to agree or disagree, that's fine. But if I'm talking about an issue that's important, and there's 30, 40, 50, 60 people standing there behind me, or standing beside me, or making the point that, yes, this is an issue to us, I'll give you an example. I don't know how much time we have, but I'll give you...
Four minutes, 17 seconds?
Four minutes, I'll give you, I'll tell you a story.
Okay.
Okay? Well, what I hope is a story. It's, 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 it's a possibility. Some years ago, there was a proposal that went before the Oregon Legislature. I'm not going to go into too much detail, because I don't want to offend anybody here. But the proposal was that some rural fire protection districts in the rural communities could work together on intergovernmental agreements, because they have the capacity to tax themselves, and they in fact do, to, to fund their volunteer fire departments, buy the equipment, and buy, and hire the professional staff. Perhaps they could work together to tax themselves for a rural safety district as well. Now, they're already set up, they have the statutory authority to do it, and then they could contract with either the state police, or the Lane County Sheriff's Office, for additional patrols. Not 24/7, not all of that, but just more, because one of the hu, biggest issues in each, in rural Lane County is, is highway safety.
Yeah.
All over. So, maybe to contract for rural patrols, so that there are, there's more presence out there, and more, quicker response. They went to the Legislature to ask them if they could do that as elected officials or as leadership. But they didn't take people from the community with them, and a lobbying group came to the Legislature and said, no, that's not a good idea. And again, I don't want to go into a lot of the details with that. If they'd showed up there with 30 people, who said, you know, I lost my life savings because we were gone for two days, and somebody broke into the house and took everything we owned, and that was everything we owned. My grandson has a serious mental, a serious brain injury, because he didn't have a fast enough response on some circumstance. People will pay attention to that. They may not be, pay attention to me as an elected official, or whatever it may be, but they will pay attention to those people that live in those communities.
Right.
And when that elected official told you, where are the people that stand behind you or stand with you? That's incredibly important, because the, the cynicism we have, where, you know, don't vote, it doesn't make a difference, they're going to do what they're going to do anyway, they won't, if you organized, if you're organized among yourself. One of my goals in this, because I do happen to be one of those people that's blessed to have the capacity to take care of myself without an additional salary, is to hire organizers locally in those watersheds to help those communities self-organize and address the issues that they have. And I, I'm looking forward to that, because I can imagine that there will be solutions that nobody had thought of, that they've been known about for weeks, months, years. That's exciting. So, finding people in the communities who are working together to keep each other safe, to protect each other, to help each other, to teach each other, that's, that's been the most positive thing about this campaign for me.
Yeah.
Because I've always known there's a wealth of human resource and goodness, and then care for one another, our ability to collaborate, our ability to cooperate. But if we don't connect, I mean, connect face-to-face with each other in community centers, or however it may be, we wouldn't know it, and we wouldn't experience it, because it's more than just reading about it or hearing about it, it's actually...
Well, I like, I remember hearing one time that you have retired, and you've done quite well for yourself, and you're not bragging, but you're just simply, you're, you're independent, and with means. And the thing is, you know, you and I are in an age, like if I was to restructure my life, I'd get a government pension, I'm, I'm doing better than a lot of Americans if I restructured, which I, you know, in time could do. The point is, is that unlike most Americans, I could be sitting at a point where I wouldn't